So, we're back and I believe there is some response to the last comments that were made. Craig?
Yeah, it was just, all of the concerns that a lot of people raising are entirely valid. There's a lot of logistical complications with getting these kind of changes done. I did want to pick up, however, on just comparing the cost benefits of having to occasionally pull kids out for sports games, extracurricular activities. According to the DMC report, on average, over the year, it would be about five pullouts, if I'm correct, under option two. And that compares to a study at the University of California, which was an independent randomized study. So they looked at kids who had first periods starting before 8:00 AM and kids whose classes started after 8:00 AM. And this is, so it's randomized research, and they found that kids who started before 8:00, across the board, performed worse in every single course they took that day, not just the first period. And they found that the negative effect diminished the later the school day began, and that those findings were compelling to recommend that schools start later. And I think you have to, you know, look at the 180 days that our students go to school and can be more alert through those days versus clearly inconveniences with now and then having to pull kids out early. But I think it's just useful to see the comparison. There isn't any research on how logistically challenging it is. I think that's why we have a forum like this.
There is no research, yes.
The research is all on the benefits. The cons are logistically oriented and these are very legitimate concerns, and that's what the Board is tasked with, kind of figure out how to solve these issues.
And I just want to make sure that I speak really clearly to the scheduling of the buses. If we schedule a bus with all 75 students that are at capacity, we know from experience that we never have 100% ridership. So if we schedule to 100%, if you look at the different schools, you see that our ridership is somewhere between 30% and 60% of that. Right now, because of the size of our community and the number of stops, we can't even schedule the buses for full capacity because we go beyond the hour run. The cluster stops would allow us to schedule closer to capacity, but we know from experience we never fill to capacity. And even if this change increases bus ridership, again, I want to say, we would monitor that, we would respond to that, we will never overload a school bus. I just want to make sure that that was clear.
My name is Barry Felsen. I live on Moose Hill Road, and I'm the father of a really overprogrammed sophomore in high school. And I think that there've been a huge number of points that have been made. I thought it was simple, walking in. I said, "How can anybody oppose this?" Because it's in the long-term best interest of not only the students, but the whole community. And my overriding concern is health and safety as well. I have a son who doesn't want to stay up all night, but still doesn't get enough sleep. And I monitor him pretty carefully. I actually have a question for you, Craig. Craig, number one. And that is, I think there's a fallacy that, you know, I keep on hearing young people say, "Well, I can catch up on the weekend. You know, I'm not getting enough sleep during the week. I can always sleep until noon on the weekend." And my understanding of the research is that that doesn't happen.
Yeah, I think you can, the phenomenon is called sleep debt. So if you're chronically sleep deprived, sleeping on the weekend makes you feel better. And it may help a little bit, but it doesn't get you back to normal. And there are also some consequences, specifically teenagers who can't, they tend to struggle the most. They say they come in the weekends, they sleep till 11:00, they sleep till 11:00. Then they can't fall asleep till 11:00 or 12:00 or 1:00 in the morning. On Monday night, then they start the week behind the 8-ball, and the cycle just repeats itself. And that's really the consequence. My patients in clinic who struggle with these issues, all of them sleep an hour or two later, but not more than that, because otherwise, it actually makes things worse during the week.
Thank you for clarifying that. I thought that's just another piece to put into the puzzle. Somebody already expressed the concern of, you know, if you're that outlier and you have to walk a half to three-quarters of a mile, you're not going to get any extra sleep. You're just going to be spending it in a different way, much more healthy perhaps than spending another hour or, you know, online. But one of my concerns is literally is safety with the cluster stops. Living on Moose Hill Road, I get the, there's one stop sign where Moose Hill hits Peddlers, and I get to watch cars blow through that stop sign every hour of every day. I don't walk on Moose Hill Road. It's too dangerous. I get concerned about, I get concerned about my family cycling on Moose Hill Road. You can't see around blind corners, you know, if it's, even if it's in the middle of the day. A lot of the roads around here are pretty dangerous, just in terms of their physical layout. So I'm curious about how, given the 50 square miles and all the roads we've got, how you'll come to a decision on what's safe in terms of having young people walking?
So we've got policy, we've got guidance from the DMV, we've got a safety officer who works with us from STA, and we in fact collaborate with the Guilford Police Department. So again, I appreciate the question, and I'll make the same comment. We want to increase the use of cluster stops. During the informal break, I was approached by a couple of parents who said, "We've always had cluster stops in our neighborhood and they work fine." I want to be clear, it's not that we don't have any in our current structure. In fact, we've at a very small scale been trying to increase them just here and there. We want to increase the number of cluster stops to improve efficiency in the whole system. We will not do that at the cost of safety. So it's come up a number of times, I appreciate it. I want everyone to be clear, we won't ask students to walk on dangerous roads. There will be places where we, and DMC didn't look at us as if we were a densely populated urban center with sidewalks. We could be even more efficient if the town was full of straight roads, sidewalks, and street lamps, and it's just not. But we want to move more in that direction, is all.
That's comforting to hear, that reassurance. When I was a young person in high school, I know it's hard to believe that I ever was one, but it was at some, at one point, I was invulnerable. None of the rules of nature applied to me. You know, they all apply to me now. I remember my mother kept on saying, "You're going to pay for that when you grow up." And, you know, finally, one day, I actually said to her, I arrived at her doorstep in Montreal when I was about 55. She greeted me, and I said, "You were right, Mom." You know, my knees are shot, my back is shot, all that. So, and I've worked with young people. I ran a youth leadership development nonprofit for seven years. I've had these kinds of conversations with people. The consequential thinking part of our brains doesn't develop fully until we're about 25. Young people don't understand that. And I don't want to act like an old fart who knows, you know, or know it all, but we also have to take into account that the science is there and it's clear. And somebody mentioned before, Marion mentioned before, you know, "Let's take the emotion out of the decision-making." Well, decision-making, people who understand decision-making understand that it's all about emotion. There's very little logic that goes into decision-making. I'm hoping that the Board of Ed will take the emotion out of it and see that we've got to go with the science. Start with the end in mind, and then, yeah, it's going to be, this is like a bowl of spaghetti. We've got to untangle a ton of things in order to line things up so that we can achieve what we want to achieve in the end. And we can find hundreds of reasons not to do it. And, you know, there's an old expression, "Fish don't know what water is." And we have a lot of people who are, a lot of fish that are swimming in the only water that they know. When they get, when a fish gets taken out of water, they discover very quickly what water is. There were a lot of people who opposed the building of this high school. There were a lot of people who will oppose any change. People don't typically resist change, they resist being changed. And what I want to do is thank you for involving the community in these kinds of conversations, and encourage the Board to continue to do that. Listen to everyone, and perhaps, I don't know if this is in the plan, but after the survey closes, convene another meeting, or a series of meetings that say, "This is what the survey is telling us. Let's have another conversation," rather than just taking it to the Board. So, thank you all for all of your work. I know this isn't easy. And I had my eyes really opened, both by the research that's been done and also the comments that have been made tonight. So thank you, and thank everybody for being here.
I just wanted to say one thing while you're coming up. I remember when I was in high school, I graduated in 1991, we had a smoking section at our high school. And it was, you know, not just for seniors. And that seems insane now, right? I mean, that you, kids could smoke outside of the cafeteria. I hope in 20 or 30 years, we're talking the same way about these early start times. You know, it's crazy.
Hi, Steve Arby, I live in Guilford here. Got a couple of kids in the elementary school over by Lakes. There aren't too many children on the bus where my kids get on. And I do see the kids that are in the middle school getting up pretty early and going. And I try to think back what it was like when I went to school, and the school started around 8:15, 8:30. We were fortunate in our city where we had two high schools, so it bridged the geographic problems that Guilford has. Myself, I walked to school, it wasn't a big deal for high school, it was a couple of miles. When we became teenagers and we had some kids that had access to a car, we car pulled, probably going on today, I would imagine, with some kids. I didn't like riding the bus, but my kids liked riding the bus. They have the option for me to drive or walk with them. They'd rather get on the bus at 8:30 instead of showing up at 5:00 to 9:00. I don't know if that'll be true when they're in high school, maybe they do want to sleep in. Interesting though, as I was reading the pediatric report at 4:00 in the morning, because I'm up early, I fell asleep. And my kids, who get up at 6:30, woke me up. And after, I continued reading the documents. And what I found in the documents, there's enough truth in the documents to justify, in my opinion, that kids in that age group should probably sleep in a little bit. However, I also found in the documents, and the references, I think it was reference 25 and that same, that the number we haven't heard for learning abilities to increase performance, academic performance, is 2% to 3% in mathematics. Okay? Currently, in this high school, the kids who took the test last year, they're seniors. 40% of them failed the S-Back. That's the national test. So Paul was right. It'll be difficult to measure a 2% drop from, say, well, it's actually 42%. It'll go 42% to 40%. That'll be the drop, the better performance that we would expect if the kids were allowed to sleep in. That's all they're going to get. The difference for English, in the studies they're quoting, and look at the references, I encourage you to read them, for English, it's 2%. So there's no magic pill. It's still going to require homework, study, balance, sports. We won't find any answers for our kids to be able to obtain jobs better, compete better in college. They may or may not be well-rested for 30 more minutes. That's all this will bring us. And that's a sad statement in a $92 million high school. 30 more minutes of sleep, 2% performance. That's all they can, that's all that can be said.
So I want to correct a point. 40% of our students did not fail the S-Back test. The Smarter Balance Assessment is a standardized assessment, and it is scored across four categories. It is not a pass/fail assessment. It is the first year that the new assessment has been administered, and it has significantly higher standards than the assessment that we had delivered before. The appropriate way to look at an S-Back assessment is to measure our students against state performance or national performance and see where our students fall. It is only measured across four areas, it's not scored, passed, or failed, it's not scored on a 100 percentile. It's, it is a test that is intended to be used by the instructional institution to monitor performance. Our students aren't graded on it, they don't receive a pass or fail, it is not a high assess, so I want to be careful in how we talk about the numbers. It's not a pass/fail sort of assessment. It is a measure that we use to inform us about how the district is performing, and the best way to look at it, especially when it's a new assessment, is to compare our performance to other local or state or national performances.
Paul is correct in some respect. However, you can normalize data into percentages. That's what I did. There was four groupings. The first two groupings were basically the group I considered failed. The other two groupings were at level or above. So you parse the language, the math is simple, the data is posted by the state. Okay, so let's say I'm correct and Paul's wrong. We're only talking 2%. Let's say Paul's correct and I'm wrong. We're still only talking 2%. A $92 million high school, 2%. I'm saying 40% of the kids failed. You can look at the data yourself and make the determination. I've also heard, yeah, there's a new baseline. There's a new baseline. It's a standardized national test, that's what S-Back was. The Board of Education, I don't want to make this about the S-Back test, but the data they proposed and showed that we're supposed to be reading for academic performance was all in there. I read it. It's 2.5% to 3% for mathematics performance increase if they sleep another hour. I think it's significant. I'll take a 2% increase in performance. That's why I would support it. But that's all it is, let's not overestimate it. Couple other things I support. Clusters. I didn't realize we had them. I didn't see them around town. They should, if they're, if they're in small numbers, they should be increased significantly for efficiency. We should build out sidewalks wherever we can, bicycle routes, put adults on corners, let the kids walk. There's benefits from that. More than 30 minutes of sleep. Alternative strategies for education. Do kids really need to come every day? We have a lot of electronics. Kids that stay home could sleep in even longer. Participate in school, the conferences, the classroom remotely. We don't even have to have buses on the road three days a week. Also, back on the science. A lot of the science that we're focusing in on the high school, but a lot of the data that was supporting the arguments today was mixed or polluted with what would be considered information from the middle schools. I think what's true for high school, as far as I could tell, is true for the middle grades. Fifth, sixth, seventh, and eighth. That data, the data they showed in those graphs, was identical in terms of performance increase. 2%, 3%. English math. I do want to say, I appreciate the effort that everybody's put into it. I learned a lot tonight, especially the one lady that talked about the buses. That was a technical discussion that I don't think I would have gotten anywhere with. That was very good. You guys have put a lot of work into it. My comments are not to think outside the box, but just to make the box bigger. There's other strategies to get these kids to school, other ways to do it, even with just one high school, even with just the budget we have. There's ways to get, gather those economies. If we can keep the kids in school, at home, for another half hour, fine. Thank you.
Hello? John Harford, 652 Tanner Marsh Road. Just moved here from New York in 2014, and really happy to be in the community. I just have one comment and then a couple of questions. So maybe a comment or a question on the clustering. So I live on Tanner Marsh Road, and it's 25 miles an hour. And I would be hard-pressed to find a car that goes 25 miles an hour on Tanner Marsh Road, especially if they're going from Route 1 to Goose Lane. I don't think that exists. I do drive around 25 miles an hour. And I know when I'm pulling off of Goose Lane and going onto Tanner Marsh Road, and there's a car ahead of me making the commute to Route 1, that car is gone, like faster than I can, you know, they're going like 45 miles an hour. So I would hope that the Board and the panel would consider not the posted speed limits, but rather the average speed of the cars on those roads as the main factor in determining what is safe to walk on and what have you. But I do like the idea of sidewalks, and I think the community would improve greatly if we did have sidewalks for the, for the community of Guilford. It would be an incredible expense, but I think that it would bring the community together. There's no reason why we all have to get in our cars all the time. So just a question on scenario one. Does anyone on the panel have any reservations on the very early start times for middle school students?
I'm not psyched about it myself. I mean, I, you know, I think that, look, to me, I don't think it's a good fit for anybody. The DMC was sort of tasked with coming up different ways that they could make these changes. I think that the younger the child is, the less likely they are to be affected by an earlier school start time. The problem is, is that it's, it doesn't look good, nor is it the right thing to have the youngest kids out on a winter morning at 6:30 or 7:00 in the morning. So I believe that was sort of viewed as a compromise measure, that the younger elementary, the younger middle school kids were more, probably more like elementary school kids than like teenagers. It's sort of a continuum, right? As you proceed through puberty, your biological clock gets later, and that's why, isn't that graph, that ninth graders were more likely to get enough sleep than the 12th graders. You know, I personally, as a private citizen, think that, you know, the second option, even with the cost, is a better fit because it has more efficiencies. And, you know, I see both sides of it. I have elementary schoolers, and I know they're ready to go well before, even when they leave at 45 in the morning. I mean, they're driving us crazy. You know, I think, unfortunately, because of the geographic constraints of our time, we can't make things perfect. We couldn't say move everybody to an 8:00 AM start time. It'd be just extraordinarily costly to do that. You know, I think that...
My comment would be that Craig's got the much easier argument to make here tonight, right? Craig is arguing the research, and he gets to argue that the research is right. The Board of Ed, however, is going to be tasked with figuring out the logistics. And short of starting everybody at 8 o'clock, there's going to be compromises. So what becomes abundantly clear in a conversation like this one is we're balancing financial concerns versus safety concerns versus social concerns. There's just a bowl of spaghetti, I mean, you know, it's a Gordian knot, there's going to be compromise. And so the two templates that were shown tonight, out of the five or six or seven that we ran in the past, were because they exhibit a couple common patterns. And so whichever one we choose, it's going to come with compromises, and it's clear from conversations like tonight, whichever option we choose will be applauded by some and will be, you know, deplored by others. There's a lot that goes into the logistical, and the Board of Education by far has the much more challenging task in front of them, weighing research versus feedback from a community versus all of the logistical pieces that go into that puzzle.
Great. And the final question is, so Guilford is a geographical outlier in the region. It is different from Madison, it's different from Branford or North Branford. Has the work included comparisons to other similar geographical areas in the country? I imagine that we are, though dissimilar from other townships, we are maybe not so dissimilar from townships in the Midwest or other regions.
No, not at our level. We haven't asked our bus company or people in-house. And quite honestly, we're actually pretty similar to Madison geographically. They go about as far north as we do, and, you know, if you look at the two townships, we're shaped very much the same.
I'm still new, so...
That's okay. But you're right, there are other towns, for instance, like Westbrook or Clinton, that are very different. And so while, you know, some of the, some of the feedback that I have heard is that much of the research is from other parts of the country. It's not unusual for New England to lag. So one of the other issues that we're exploring in this, in this district right now is international baccalaureate programs, popular all over the country, but not so in New England. So it is not, you... New to New England or just new to Guilford?
Somewhat. I'm from New York, so it's close enough.
Okay, so you've got stubborn people there too, but New Englanders don't tend to embrace change real comfortably. It's not unusual for the rest of the country to make some decisions. Also, and I want to be really careful about this, a lot of other districts are much, much larger, and sometimes it's easier to make a change in a larger system. I get that there's a lot of things that are more challenging, but sometimes size comes with, with a little more freedom and some efficiencies of scale, economies of scale.
Great. And just a last comment, I would hope the Board of Ed would consider the primary focus, health and safety over achievement.
Thank you. Thank you for your help earlier.
Oh, sure.
Yes, and thank you for being patient.
Sometimes it's one of those, yes. Not in the morning. I'm Barbara Hargraves, and I live on Landon's Way, and I have a third grader who's in class with your son, and I also have a fifth grader at Baldwin. I had a couple of questions, actually. Let's see. In that two-tiered program, the two-tiered option, you had, so the buses would actually make two school stops, going and coming, or just, so like the one that would do the Baldwin and the elementary school? They would stop at one school and then stop at the other school?
Very likely, yes. And so, yes, the difficulty with the Baldwin Elementary Run is that our elementary schools are all neighborhood schools. So right now, the elementary runs get to be really small and local. If we add Baldwin to that run, we're now adding a town-wide. So in fact, and what I've said before, there may in fact, when that gets shaken out, have to be two times. You may have, you may have one elementary school on the south where the students are dropped off, and then the bus goes to Baldwin. So you could actually have three times that would all be on the same run, but you might have two schools, one north and one south, that starts at, I've already lost the times, let's say 9:30, and then two that start at 9:35, and then Baldwin. So there may be some variation. That is just, again, a broad pattern, but you're right. Some of the students are going to have to be dropped locally. We might have to have some buses that are running town-wide and others that are local. There's a lot of detail yet to be finalized.
Okay, and then you, it keeps coming up, buses are not at capacity. Is that, that's by design, or is that by choice? Like, is that parents that are, because like, the curious thing is the high school buses, they're not running at capacity, but is it because we have so many juniors and seniors that are driving?
It's by statute. And so it's, part of it is by statute, and then part of it is driven by the geography of our town. We're required by law to provide a ride for every child in the district. So lots of times in conversations like this, someone will suggest, "I never take the bus, I'll sign away my," right? If we could have people opt out of the bus routes, we could have, you can't do that. We have to provide a seat for every child, because if a family loses the car or loses a job, we can't say, "Sorry, there's no room for you on the bus." So we have to make sure that we schedule a seat for every child. And then when lots of people choose to drive and not to use the bus, that ends up with empty seats. The other problem with us currently scheduling 75 students to every bus, we can't even get that high, because to schedule 75 stops, even if it's the drive-by stop, the ride becomes 80 or 90 minutes long. So we've got to stop putting numbers on the bus when we get to the time length. So you've got, you've got the capacity of the bus that controls, but you've also got the length of the run that controls. Again, by going to cluster stops, picking up 10 kids at once allows us to go further, making fewer stops, therefore getting closer to the 75, which we will never hit or exceed.
Right. Okay, all right, that's good. The kid, you know, the students here, and I really should comment too, I was really impressed with the fact that they were able to get up and speak to all of us, because the room has emptied significantly, and still, getting up is a little nerve-wracking. But they bring up a very good point, and the extracurricular activities and sports and everything that really happens between school and, and the time they go to bed, it's important, and it's an important piece of this puzzle. Getting extra sleep is great. It seems like it's very important to them. So this, is their survey going to be the same as the survey going out to adults? I shouldn't say adults, some of them are adults too, to parents? And the reason I ask is, are they going to be as interested in answering... And the reason I ask is, are they going to be as interested in answering questions about would you financially pay for the, you know, like which one would you be more supportive of? Or are they going to be more interested in, you know, this is not going to allow me to do my extracurricular activities that are not at school? Is there going to be an allowance in there for them to voice that opinion?
Yes. So, the surveys are essentially the same. There are some minor changes, mostly around the demographic information. And in fact, I'll tell you that in my conversation at the high school today, the kids were very concerned about the financial implications. In fact, they wanted me to tell, they do what USA News does all the time. They wanted me to tell them what that cost meant in the number of teacher salaries. That's how they wanted to, that's how they were going to conceptualize, is $250,000 a lot or not a lot? They wanted to know what that means. Now, I made it clear to them that we're not going to be laying off teachers in order to bring this, to make this happen. It's a matter of looking at all of those priorities together and figuring out how and when those sorts of things can happen. They're going to be asked very much the same questions that you're going to be asked.
Okay. That's good. Well, and I would argue that the math on that is great. They're looking into things that I don't know that I would have considered at the same age. I just think that, I would like to encourage the board, when you guys are looking at this, to make changes for the high school alone is important and I think it's very important for our high school students to get sleep, but at the detriment of middle school students who are essentially the same age, at 10 to 14, having them get up too early is going to be just as much, I think, problem with studies in school and everything else as a high school student. I have an, I mean, I have a third grader, but she's not going to be there much longer. But I look at those kids and I think, oh, if they start too late, they're missing a portion of their learning time. You know, to what you said, Dr. Conapari, about your kids are up early in the morning, they do much better in the earlier hours. I'm not pushing an earlier start time, but to push their start time even later, it seems like we're closing their window. I mean, tier two, the tier two, I keep saying tier two, the option two with the two tiers, is a good option because I do think that that one looks, it really takes all of the students into account. I also would say that, you know, the kids' extracurricular activities at the high school level, as a parent of an eight-year-old and a 10-year-old, I have an awful lot of say as to what we do and what we don't do. And I know that that's going to change. It's starting to change already, which is good, it's supposed to. But as high school students, they have a lot more say as to what they want to do. And I just would encourage you to consider the extracurricular activities and stuff in that hour as well. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yes.
My name is Ali Winters. I live on Long Hill Road. I've been in education for a number of years. I had a couple of questions, I think, first. How long are the class periods in the high school?
58 minutes.
Okay. And if we decided to do clustering, how much time would that save us in bus commute? Or would it be the same amount of time?
It's difficult to answer that way. It would, it would make the runs more efficient. I don't know, I'd have to really go back to the report and ask DMC if we can put a number of minutes on how much time was saved. I don't know how to answer that tonight.
Okay. And then, back to Rick. Out of all the students, if you could give me an average about how many students take a full eight-period course load? What'd you think?
I can't give you a percent.
Do most kids have a study hall?
Yes. Yes, they do.
I know that we talk about community and I grew up in Guilford. My brother was a big person here in Guilford and tall. Not my height. I like Guilford because we're a community, but we're a community not like on our sidewalk or on our street or in our neighborhood or in our school or even the high school, but the community reaches out to parents, to the teachers here. And I think that we need to kind of take into consideration the implications that it'll have on the teachers. If we're starting, for example, the scenario one pushes the elementary schools back to almost 4:30, then you're talking about teacher meetings and then their transportation time home, whether it be 30 minutes or an hour. They have families too. So, now you're asking these teachers who give up so much of their time and so much of their day, on top of being in school, but at home too. I mean, we all have taken home, if you've been in education, hours of homework. We're asking them to take away from their families and from their time. Don't get me wrong, I agree that these kids, these older kids need more sleep. I was one of them. I slept through my AP class and I still got a four. I don't know how, but I did it. But it was that first-period class. I think looking outside the box might be a good idea, maybe changing a seven-period day instead of an eight-period day. The bus schedules will not be affected because we're literally just cutting off 58 minutes of the day, which might be, I don't know if it's an option, but it's a little bit easier to schedule. And I know there's the union implications of the teachers' union and the time that they have to serve into school. That might be a good time for CIAs, vertical teams, whatever needs to be done that way. To me, it seems that that would be the easiest fix. I don't know if it's even been considered, but you're giving kids a later start, you're allowing teachers that PD time that they probably need, you really don't have to mess with the bus schedule that much, there would be no financial burden. And I think that might be something, I don't know if the board would be considering.
Yeah, that's not something that I would bring forward to the board because at this point, we're already relatively low in contact time. I wouldn't suggest reducing student contact time in order to make this piece work. We have 180 school days. There's a lot of districts that have 185 school days. We've got five professional development days built into the calendar. We do have some early release days for PD. I wouldn't want to start dipping into student instructional time in order to make this work. To me, to me, that would be something that I wouldn't bring forward to the board. I appreciate the suggestion that we've got to keep looking. We've got to keep looking for new ideas. Earlier this week, one of the, you know, again, we've talked a lot about the buses tonight. We were reminded earlier last week, we've been reminded a couple of times tonight, that the buses may not be the only solution to this, so I appreciate the idea, but I wouldn't want to drop a period. I wouldn't want to go into instructional time.
But if they're using that instructional time as a study hall, is it instructional time?
If we shorten, if we shorten the whole day from seven periods, or from eight periods to seven periods, then yes. Then across the student population, you'd be, you'd be reducing that contact time. I wouldn't want to shorten our school day in any way. Right now, we've got students who can't fit everything they want to do into their schedule here at Guilford High School. I appreciate the idea, but that's not one that I want to, I want to start pursuing right now.
Okay. That was my own suggestion.
Thank you.
Hello.
Hi. Good evening. I want to thank everybody for all the hard work you've done on this. The data is clearly irrefutable. My name is Danielle Morgan. I live on Sperry Drive. And I've been listening to this discussion with two perspectives. I'm the mom of two boys, one a second grader and one a fifth grader. And I struggle greatly with the idea of lost extracurricular activities or trying to juggle this spaghetti that we've talked about. My sons are very involved in the Guilford community as well as the New Haven community. And that just is something I don't want to lose, so I encourage the board to please consider that. Additionally, I'm a psychotherapist. I have a large private practice in New Haven and in Guilford. Probably about 40% of my population is adolescents. I've been treating adults and adolescents for about 16 years now in a myriad of mental illness. And I would say 100% of the various mental illnesses all consist of sleep problems. And I can't echo enough the need for sleep hygiene to be addressed. And I never really considered changing the school day or as a way to solve that problem. You know, my task has been to work with families and parents and those teenagers on addressing their, putting their phones away and their time management. And it's really been quite successful. I'm impressed with these young people and how they take personal responsibility and find ways to re-manage and rebudget their time. So, I just encourage people to think about that in also a different way. And as a public health forum, we may consider that as a different educative effort, particularly as we think about shaking everyone's schedule up in an entire community. Just something to think about.
Thank you.
Hi, Brian.
How are you? Brian Wiley, Davis Drive. I have a child in eighth grade and a child in fifth grade, fourth grade, I'll kill me for that. And I had several points since it's now when it is. I'll try to leave a couple of them out. But my first observation is that I care very deeply. I love my kids more than anything. And the most important thing to me is what's good for them, what works for the kids, what's collectively, not looking at any one aspect of their lives, but overall, what is best for them now and in the long run. So, I'll ask each of you to go ahead and raise your hands if you don't know which side I'm on. There's my point. I think a decision like this is very complex. It has more data and more factors. My professional life is all about data and analyzing and figuring out what the right answer is based on the facts. We're not going to have all the facts. We're not going to have all the data. It would be great to know how many kids are going to have to get out early each year, each day, each week, each year because of sports. It would be great to know exactly how many dollars and that effect is going to be. We're not going to know all that. We can know more than we do, and I'm sure we will, but we're not going to know all of that. So, what we have to do in the end is frankly, not take the emotion out of it because emotion and intuition are fundamental parts of the decision-making process. We can ask lots of questions, we can come up with lots of issues and problems and concerns, and we should because some of those are legitimate and unsolvable, some of those are probably not as bad as they seem, and some of those are solvable. So, we need to continue to have this discussion as we're doing, and I hope there'll be more open forum like this. And in the end, my own personal view, which I, hasn't changed a bit, I've heard a lot of interesting factors I hadn't thought of. My own personal view is that it's up to the board to decide, but hopefully the board will be strong enough to decide either option one or option two, not option zero. Just a couple of really quick thoughts on the bus situation. If you, this is the data coming out. If you look at the report, I think the high school was 35 or 40% and seventh and eighth grade was 60 or 70%. If you blend those two numbers together, which was the idea for option two, that bus isn't all that crowded. It's not like you're putting 75 people on a bus. If you schedule 75 people, it's maybe 40 or 50 weighted average. Another thing to think about is that the smaller, the younger kids' buses will be more crowded in terms of numbers, but again, they're smaller. It's just kind of a simple fact of life. I've noticed over the years as my kids get older, that, just an anecdotal point, as they get older, they sleep later. This is, apparently the data supports it, but most parents are pretty well aware that when they're really young, as somebody else pointed out earlier, it's pretty easy to get them up. All you have to do is let them get you up. But as they get older, that role reverses pretty significantly. That's because it's natural. We can keep trying to get the kids up earlier, get them to school earlier, or we can let them sleep and be healthy and, by the way, probably perform better on the athletic fields as well. That sort of follows with the academic performance. Had a couple of other points, but it's late, so I'll leave the floor to anybody else who wants to come up.
Thank you. Thanks. Rather than practice really good wait time, I'm going to take advantage of the pause to thank all of you for coming out tonight. It's been a very long evening, but we really do appreciate the interest in all of the feedback. Please keep an eye out for the survey that'll come out this week and please continue to follow the conversation. There will be more to come. Thank you very much.
Just one quick question.
Yes.
Larry Vakas is gone, but the option that he put forward, and that was the two-tier bus system, flipping it away, is that, was that under consideration?
So, I'll answer both of the questions. Right now, there's, every option in the world is still in front of us. So, yes, we have the opportunity to go back and hybridize or tinker or change anything that we're looking at, and we're not committed to any timeline. The board last year said that we would begin a conversation with an eye towards September of 16, but we're in no way locked into that. So, if we get the survey results back and if we choose to move fairly quickly, then we're on a very tight timeline to make that kind of change and publicize it fairly and have something in place for September of 16, that's possible. If we decide that the more we talk, the more involved it gets and that we want to slow the process down and be really respectful, we could, we could parallel Greenwich and talk about 2017. We've got a world of options in front of us. We're not locked into anything at this time.
Would be ever any better financial number than that bus scenario?
So, possibly. There's a number of things to look at. Right now, there's a study on our website that projects that we've got declining enrollment. So, if, as enrollment numbers go down, then yes, there may be the option to be able. Now, again, our geography fights against us, but fewer kids would argue for a possibility there. If fuel prices continue to decline, we learn more. Quite honestly, what I'll tell you is whatever we do the first year, won't be the final iteration. The first year that we do anything different won't be the best year. We will implement something, we will learn from that implementation, and I imagine we'll be able to generate more efficiencies moving forward. We're looking at using GPS location on our buses much more effectively and efficiently than we're doing it now. We've brought in new scheduling software that we have never had in the past. So, yes, I think there's ways to improve. The flip side is, the contract with the bus contractor expires, that'll be renegotiated, there will be a cost increase associated with that. Gas price thing turns around and prices start skyrocketing, so yes, it could go down, we could do better, but there's also options that it could increase. But that's, we've got the buses now, you know? I mean, a number of people have suggested that there's a lot of compromises associated in any of these plans. We're just comfortable with the compromises that are related to the way we do it now. Change is hard because you get comfortable, but it doesn't mean there aren't compromises that are connected to what we're doing now. And it's late, I think I wandered off your original question. Again, thanks very much. Have a really good night. We appreciate you being here.
See you later.
It's interesting. Most cases...